Tawnytown Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Would you please stand to the pledgator flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is saying one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. Councilman Tillman is not here this evening, and also Jay's not here this evening. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the draft minutes for March the 25th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? There are none, I'll entertain.
Make a motion, we accept the minute as written.
All right, second.
Okay, made by Myers, second by Bill.
Yes.
And further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Carrie, thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is AVAPCO Allendale Lane Parking Lot. I guess according to this, we're seeking a concept approval, and also a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Is that correct?
Most of it.
Most of it.
The general I'm looking for is this. Jim, I didn't get a chance to call you back. So what we're looking for is contingent, concept approval pending a favorable outcome from the BZA. We're just trying to get it moving along before the next meeting. So, concept site plan approval contingent upon BZA.
Okay, so I guess that answers my next question. Who succeeds, supersedes what? So I guess depending on Board of Appeals, it would depend on our approval, right?
Yes.
So the best you can do tonight is contingent on the Board of Appeals approval?
Okay. And just so I get things straight in my mind, January the 29th, we'd had the presentation.
Right.
March the 25th.
I think you already gave a recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, we did.
We did once, right?
Yes, to the Board of Appeals, yes. They wrote recommendation.
Okay, so then drawings tonight that we have received tonight are preliminary plans of drawing.
Just so you have them.
Just so we have them.
Just one lesson of a progress we've made since we were before the last time.
Okay. Now, did they already go to the county?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yes, moved along pretty good, too.
All right. So someone from the, from AVAPCO would like to state your name and your address, please?
I'm Jim Mathias. I'm with Development Design Consultants. We are the consulting engineers for AVAPCO. So you've seen the con, you've seen the concept plan several months ago, and as Daryl mentioned, you were also forward a copy of the preliminary site plan, which has gone through a first ru, a first review by Carroll County. Just to highlight a couple of changes that have been made since we were before you with the concept plan. AVAPCO acquired the Taney Corporation property immediately to the east of the subject project, which allowed us to do some, to do a little grading onto that adjacent property, and allowed us to increase the parking from what we showed on the original concept plan. From, I believe it was 70 couple parking spaces, we're now up to 108. Also, Mr. Myers even pointed out that there was some concern with the pedestrian crossing across Allendale. We've done a little bit of investigation, talked to our traffic consultant. If you've been in Westminster the last few months, you can see in some of the crosswalks, especially along, yeah, approach to commission, have some, have some pictures.
Yeah.
We have those.
We have that, we have that, Jim.
We have, Jim.
But I wasn't sure if it was the same one or not.
So we're actually pursuing that. Just a brief summary of how they operate. These are completely, they're going to be, the one you see here isn't solar powered, but the ones that we're proposing will be solar powered. They're also wireless. They communicate without having a cable, so there won't be any trenching across Allendale Road. And to coordinate the synchronization between the way they operate is, they're not always flashing. You approach it, you push the button, it starts flashing in both directions and let traffic know in both directions that there will be somebody crossing the, crossing the road.
Thanks. Yep. Any other comments? Any other changes?
That's it.
All right.
Can you comment? I have, the town doesn't have any standards when it comes to parking lots. How big are parking spaces supposed to be?
They're nine by twenty. Nine by twenty.
They are? Okay. Because it shows nine by eighteen on them. Original drawing, I don't know if it changes when the new one.
Yeah, Mr. Carter, I think what we're doing there is where we have the situation where the parking space is up against a curb. Those spaces are nine by eighteen. Where the spaces are internal, we've also got some room in there. We've got a two-foot gap in between those spaces to allow for the cars to overhang.
And that nine by eighteen along the perimeter is permissible? It just can't block a sidewalk to have that.
Right, and there's no sidewalk, yeah, there's no sidewalk proposed.
Any other comments? Okay, hey, any comments from the floor? If not, um.
Chairman, that one.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Roger Brown. I have 5103 Allendale Lane. My biggest question is for this gentleman, I guess. You know, your proposal, you're going from, what, 70, you said, to 108? To 108. So my biggest question is, it might be dumb, but the drainage. What are we doing about the drainage? Because it's heading towards Honey Creek.
Right, well, right now, there's a natural drainage course that's created by that pond immediately to the south. We're providing full stormwater management. We're controlling the two and 10-year storms that are leaving our site.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, my question is, is it going into Honey Creek?
It's going into that channel that is going to be draining immediately to the low point on 194.
Okay.
So my question is, I don't think Honey Creek can handle the ester water going through there.
We, we're not going to be putting any additional water in there. We're going to be managing it to control the two and the 10-year storms. So what's going, what's draining there now in the existing condition? We'll be matching that in the proposed condition.
Well, just my, my biggest thing is, I have seen when we had heavy rains, how Honey Creek has already filled up so much. So my biggest concern is, if you throw an ester water in what you're claiming you're not, you know, I, you know, Honey Creek really needs to be something done with it.
What are we doing to slow the volume down? Are we doing anything as far as another pond or under the paving or?
What we're doing to provide environmental site design is we're using the Filterra inlets, which is an inlet that provides filtration, as a filtration chamber. And then for the quantity, I'm oversimplifying, for the quantity control, we're providing an underground chamber with, I believe it's four 36-inch perforated pipes, all wrapped in stone. When it leaves the site, then, it'll be leaving at the same rate that it's, that it's leaving the site in the existing condition.
So it's going into that chamber first?
Yeah, and then it's, yeah, it's in a chamber, and then, once that chamber fills, it's then discharged by a pipe.
Same amount that it was.
Same amount of flow.
I see hell, but there's hell.
I guess time will tell.
Yeah, and that's demonstrated on your map.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, with that, I'll.
Just as a side note, we wanted to explore previous pavement, but the soil conditions wouldn't, wouldn't allow it. The geotechnical report came back that infiltration wouldn't work. It's Tawnytown, a lot of red clay and.
Yeah, you don't have to tell us.
It holds water, yeah.
It does.
All right. I'll entertain a motion then. There, there again, contingency on Board of Appeals decision. So someone want to put that into motion? Either looking for a favorable or just favorable or no recommendation altogether?
Yep, so I'll make a motion that we accept the concept plan pending approval of the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
We're act, we're actually looking for concept plan approval with the contingency that we get the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That's what he was just trying to, that's just.
That's what I was trying to say. You said it more elegant.
Okay. Made by Myers, second by Garner. Further discussion? Any comments from the county or anyone? Okay. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, are you come, planning on coming back soon then for the preliminary approval if this goes through?
We'll be coming back for presentation of the preliminary plan end of May if, obviously, if we get BZA approval.
Thank you, thank you, folks. Clarification. What type of permit did they have to go through for demolition of those houses?
It's just a permit from, from the, for the demolition of the houses. The water and sewer had to be disconnected at the mains, which was done and supervised by our employees. And, yeah, so the county has a whole process. A lot of it was done, you know, as they, Roger, the house is still up?
More than house is still up.
Okay. So, but yeah, so it's a process. But for, for us, it's a permit first, and then the county.
County.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right. Next item on the agenda is Ridge Avenue Lots 203, 204, 205, and 206. And there again, question of waiver for minimum size, since it's an R7500 zone, for us to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So you want to give us any more light on that?
So lots 20, 203 to 206, these lots were plotted in 1936, and they were 25 feet by 125 feet. As you go through that development, you'll find the newer houses are normally the R7500 or maybe a little bit larger. There are a number of 25 by, 50 by 125, we'll give you the 6250, which there are a number of lots in that area that are that size.
6250.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, and, and it's a hodgepodge. Did you all get this sheet here?
Yes, we did.
All right, so it's hard to read, but what it has.
Yes, it is.
If you guys want to pass this back to that group back there, please. So where the four lots are, it's, it's four lots right now. And what they want to do is make those four lots into two and build, build the single dwellings you see there. So a number of things have to be satisfied, like three all-street parking spaces, with only one being in front of the actual dwelling. The 1,000-square-foot living space of the dwelling, that's satisfied in the R7500. This model does as well. All setbacks fit in the R7500 on that model, that drawing that you have. Jim, is there anything else? Living space, setbacks, parking.
On the key, key pieces.
Did you have a question about the setbacks?
I do have a question. So on the map, it shows, I'm looking at it right here. Drawing. The, it shows 25-foot minimum build line from the front and 35 from the back. I think that's backwards.
Well, it would be, but that scale is one-ish for each 30 feet, I believe it is.
Well, I didn't scale it. It says 25 and 35 on the map.
So when I looked at it, it got me two, and I started looking at the measurements. It's 52 feet from the, if you look at the parking on the, on the model on the left-hand side, you'll see where, where the 35 feet is, has been satisfied.
Right.
They have a seven-foot deck on the front.
Right. So I, I agree, the house is in the right location. I think the phantom line is just in the wrong location.
That, that could be, yeah. I, I saw that, too, yeah, but it was too late for press. So it does show the 35 in the back and the two, two tens on each side.
Representative here would like to address that?
Randy's just going through his notes there.
That's why I was.
Randy, you want mine? You want my drawing?
No, I see what, I see what Mr. Myers is talking about. Yeah, that can easily be fixed. Hey, good evening, everybody. Randy Backdell with BPR, land surveying civil engineering, and the owners of the property, Wilson Homes, both, both Chris and his son Chad. But first step in the process, we know we go to Board of Zoning Appeals. We're looking for that recommendation tonight. I'll fix what Mr. Myers just brought to my attention. And we, once we receive Board of Zoning Appeals approval, we would then have to also do an amended record plan to, to combine the two lots, and then they would proceed to a building permit.
Okay. Good. Okay. Anyone have any comments?
From what I can see, except for the 7500, it appears to meet everything else that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the setbacks.
Any comments from the floor? Please come forward and state your name and your address. And would you fill out the form, too, please?
This is Mr. Chair.
Hey, how you doing, Brad?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Bradley Wanza. Address is for Reverton Avenue. I think the first answer to my question was, just showed up on the screen there where it showed two houses. And I, yes, there are properties that are smaller than the typical there, those that were built back in the 70s on Commerce Street primarily. If you look at any modern property developed there, Reverton Ridge, Maryland, none of those are that. They are the larger lot size. They fit with the characteristic of the community, which I think is important for the planning commission to consider, as opposed to shoehorning houses onto these. I don't know that it does fit the character of it. It doesn't fit the density of Ridge Avenue or Reverton Avenue, which is very close to it as well. So I ask that the planning commission give a disapproval of this to the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Else?
Hi, I'm Beth Chaney. I live adjacent to the property at 3 Reverton Avenue. So can you put that picture back up? I guess my question is, why change the look of our neighborhood to shove two houses in there? Like, our house is on seven lots. The house adjacent to this one is on four lots. I'm just not sure why we are, like, shoving things in and shoving parking in. So my concern is, obviously, the parking up against the fence to our yard where our kids play, as opposed to having a single-family home on that lot. So I guess I just, like, encourage you to think about the way that the neighborhood is now, and why, like, what the purpose of this is.
All right. Thank you. Would the owners or Randy, would you like to make any comments on those?
Well, here, here's at 217 Maryland Avenue, which is lots 126 and 127. A house is built in 2001, so that's not really that ancient. There are several in there. I mean, we just pulled out three here pretty quickly. 1975, 14 Commerce Street lots, 152, 153, 6250. There was a whole bunch of them that you could pull out there, so I don't know. It's not going to, they'll make houses that are going to fit the neighborhood.
All right. Any other comments? Is there a concern that we need, or would like to hear?
Daryl, excuse me, so you stated that in the, in this area, that zone, R7500, there were several other, you've mentioned three. I mean, is there a large number that's under this requirement or?
Yeah, sure. I'm, how you guys doing? Oh, yeah, filled out.
You can continue with your comments while you do that.
Oh, sure. I'm Chad Wilson, Wilson Homes. How you guys doing? We found 14 with two lots, exact same thing we're proposing to do. There are lots that were four and seven, back to the 1936, I think they said it was originally plotted. But there's 14 times this has happened, exactly as we're proposing to do, in that neighborhood, Maryland Avenue, Commerce Street, as well as Ridge Avenue. So I have, I have papers I could show you of that as well, if need be, or.
I guess our task before us this evening is the subdivision, not necessarily what type of home. But just so we have an understanding, what type of home are you thinking about putting in there? A two-story home or something that blends into the surroundings now? I mean, one of the purposes of the R7500 is that the residence distance is in harmony with each other.
Sure.
So if we put in a two-story house or something like that, that's not going to really fit in what's already setting in that area.
Sure.
Now, I know our purpose here is a subdivide, not the housing. But to see the big picture, it'd be help, be helpful for us if you would kind of give us a little bit of.
Uh, most likely going to be a rancher. We didn't have any plans for, for two-story housing for these properties. I would say close to 1,900 to 2,000 square feet by the time it's all said and done. As well as that, on top of that, I think the value of these houses are going to be sold around 425. So that's substantially greater than a lot of the houses in that neighborhood. So I think if anything, it'll improve the housing value of the homes around it. New residential, new young families, I think that'll help increase that area as well.
Okay.
That answer, just the, best vision I can give you now. I don't have a plan to show you, to tell you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Do you have a builder in mind yet?
Uh, us.
Us, okay.
Wilson Homes.
Okay.
What did you say could be the size of those, these houses?
Anywhere from 1,200 square feet to 2,000, I'd say. Depending on, obviously, setbacks and what, how, how we can really fit the house on the property. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Any questions for me?
No, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Is, is that, is that drawing favorable for us to use right now?
Which one you want? Go ahead to give us. Just a reminder now, our task is a recommendation to plant into the Board of Appeals. It's just a recommendation. It's their decision. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kenyatta Brooks, and I'm just listening, and I did have a couple concerns. I've mentioned this in the city meeting that we have with the mayor and the council. You know, I've been a Tawnytown resident for a long time. I'm at 111 Epsican, by the way. And we're pricing Tawnytown out of their own community. 420, 425,000, is that what you said? I mean, the market value in that neighborhood is nowhere near 425. So, and the concern is, we are people that live here in Tawnytown. We are not going to be able to afford to live here. Because 425, the average working-class family cannot afford the 425. So that means that the people who live here, are you these folks in the back, these fine folks in the back? For example, if they had to move, would you sell your house for 425? Or could you afford to buy a house for 425? I'm just asking everyone. So, you know, it's, it's supposed to be for the community, right? Right? And I get that, but it's not affordable in the old development. And those houses don't even appraise at 425 in that area. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Maybe we can do something a little bit more affordable. I get that it is a business and we're trying to make money here, but that's a little, it's a little outrageous for the price. Thank you.
Firstly, I wouldn't think we would want to downsize or.
I, I would think if you made a single house. Yeah, if you made a single house, there it'd cost more than that.
Yes.
You, you may recall that there was a request previously to put a semi-detached house there that was denied. So the result is, you know, two single-family homes instead of that semi-detached. So, you know, I think the community has spoken, you know, about that preference already. But again, tonight is not about the specifics of the house that's going to go on there. It's whether or not this board wants to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals or not, and what that would be. So it's really all about just the lot size and nothing beyond that at this point in time.
Basically, the subdivision of the two.
I mean, the, the rest is good anecdotal information, but, you know, but we're not, we're not dictating what house goes on there tonight.
Probably values are going up in town.
Yeah, so, so for this particular instance, I, I did have trouble with us granting waivers and everything for the rules that we have, because we got the rules for some reason. So I personally am struggling with whether it's a, a good thing to do. But it's interesting to note that there's a number, you know, maybe 14 other lots of that same size in that area. So it's kind of a struggle for me.
Actually, we're not granting the waiver.
Correct, but we're.
Recommending.
We're making a recommendation.
Making a recommendation, correct.
I'm struggling with that as well.
Yeah. So are we ready for any type of motion? Remember, we've got a choice of three. Three. Or to oppose or no comment?
Right, that is an option. You don't, you aren't required to give a recommendation one way or the other. You can just opt not to give a recommendation and just leave it all in the hands of, well, it's in the hands of the Boards of, Board of Appeals regardless, but.
But I think this board has more experience with the zoning and what's going on than the Board of Appeals. So I think our recommendation is important. So I'm still looking for.
I mean, that we oppose the, the subdivision.
Okay, there is a motion to oppose it. Is there a second?
Motion, motion to make a recommendation.
Yeah, a motion to oppose it, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
What, excuse me, what's the motion?
The motion was to oppose.
The recommendation.
To oppose the.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
The subdivision.
For a subdivision. But that was a motion, that wasn't a second yet.
So the only thing on the table right now, sir, is Commissioner Brown, correct?
Right.
Okay. I, I didn't hear what Dan said.
No.
That was a question.
Okay.
Hearing none, it dies.
Okay. Yes, one more time. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, the motion didn't go through, didn't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Excuse me?
I'll make a motion, we give it a favorable.
Wait a minute, we got to finish this one. There's not a, so we're clear on that? All right, now I'll take your motion.
Okay.
What is your motion?
To recommend this to the Board of Appeals.
So you're making a favorable motion?
Yes.
Yes.
For a subdivision of what presented before us this evening? Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Morris. Other discussion.
Can I say one more thing?
To the floor, please.
They said that the house.
Please wait till you get their mics. Please state your name.
Beth Chaney, again. They said that the house would be 1,200 square feet. Based on that drawing, the house is under 1,200 square feet, if you do the math.
The proposed size.
Yes, it's under 1,200 square feet. I'm a teacher, I did the math. It's not correct.
Some like to address that?
I stated before, we don't have a plan picked out. That's a guesstimate as to what the square footage could be. If it's proposed, we would go off of exactly what the setbacks are to fulfill that need. So, the plan is not set forth with any certified plan today. That's the only thing I say.
Okay.
Chairman, are we going to see this anymore if we do?
No, we're finished. Once we go through here tonight, we're finished, our part. We have nothing to do with the houses. Our goal is the recommendation, if we make it. And when that motion's on the floor. All right. No further question? We're going to roll call vote? Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yes, is affirmative, favorable vote? To the Board of Appeals? And your vote is yes, Brad?
Nay.
Yes.
Yes, from Mr. Garner, Bill?
No. Nay.
Okay. We've got two opposed and two nays. I'm going to have to go for it in favor of it and put the burden on the Board of Appeals. I still feel that two houses on that lot is still in harmony with what's down there. I am concerned about the size of the home that's going in there. But that's out of our hands, so it's. Did you get the tally, Darryl? It's carried. Thank you. Board of Appeals is May of 15, correct?
For the Allendale.
Allendale, what, is there a date set on this yet?
It is not. It is paid for and the application is in hand, but it hasn't been processed yet. So, Randy, if latter part of this week, we can connect up with Claire Cowan, our city clerk. She'll go through what's needed next. So, we couldn't get you guys on from May, so it'll probably be at the earliest, well, hopefully in June.
Orders and reviews, none. Your comments? Thank you, folks. Your report, anything on your, your report next?
Sure. So, speaking with Councilman Tillman, he just wanted to let you all know that he was in favor of the VAPCO parking lot approval, was opposed to the lot on Ridge. Of course, he can't vote. And he'd like for you to know, Chairman, that he's in agreement with myself as a suggestion for a private training for the Board of, for the Planning Commission to make it just looser, freer, there'd be no discussion of anything that's current or, you know, currently in our pipeline, just about open meetings and whatever training we want, really. You know, so we can make it, you know, laid back and maybe we can get some pizzas and something like that and get some training like you all had requested. Dan, appreciate you reaching out with your emails. Your emails make my ears bleed. They're very, they're very well done. I appreciate it. And Chairman Parker. So, we're going to be busy coming up. So, these are tools that we're having our tool chest. We have to figure out a way to communicate going forward because when we come into the comp plan, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be information probably weekly. And then, you know, reconnoiter at a point where we're, you know, off-cycle for this meeting or whatever you guys figure out, once we get our comp plan helper, help company in here to help us with that. So, just, you know, just thinking about that. We had a second meeting today with a vendor for the comp plan. That went pretty well. It was Chairman Parker, Councilman Tillman, City Manager Wire Breck, myself. So, we're just nailing down, some questions came out of that. So, I think we're down to two vendors and we're getting some more information coming from you guys once we get some answers to what we've asked. Lot of work going on with the traffic impact study for the Soul Farm Project. Learning a lot on that part. It is a lot to a traffic study, it's amazing. I mean, nuances you can pull out of that. The county has a very rigid scenario because Harney Road is a county road. It's pretty neat to see. We met with Tiffany and other staff members at Carroll County to discuss the hazardous mitigation plan. So, we're all signed up for the, and Tiffany, catch me if I fall. The, because we went through, we adopted by way of resolution, Mayor and City Council did, we're now eligible for FEMA monies that we would not be if we didn't, had not gone through that process. That's good stuff. You know, God knows, that could be, you know, horrible financial ruin for any entity. Right, Tiffany? All right, thank you. So, yeah, I pointed out City Attorney Gallow's email about, there's some dates in the email. Can we nail it down so we can nail him down sooner rather than later?
Might as well do it now, we have it under new business, but go ahead and we can pick those dates and how we want to do it. Did we all get the same email from Jay with the dates? May 15th, 16th, some of those?
Okay.
Everybody on?
I'm good with the 15th.
15th?
Wait, well, May, so May 15th at 7:30, so it would be the BZA.
BZA.
Right.
So, I'm just, I, I think we're way better bang for the buck if we don't do it that night because they're going to open the chambers up here at 7:00. So, do we come in at 5:00? Do we, you know, say that gang rallies up and there's 50 people in here? It'd be hours long.
Okay.
So.
I would prefer not to do it on the 20th because that'd be our next planning zoning meeting. Because of the holiday, it would be moved up a week. So, I would prefer not to do it on the 20th, so at least 16th, 22nd, and 23rd.
Yeah, so the 16th would be a Tuesday then, right?
I think so, yes. Well, I don't know, I have to look.
Yes.
It is Tuesday?
No, May 16th?
May 16th.
Oh, that's Thursday. Thursday, wait a minute here. Okay, yeah, got the weekend there, Thursday.
So, May 16th is Thursday.
Yeah, the 16th, I can do.
You can make 16, Harry?
Yeah, I can make any of them.
Brad is?
Wife's birthday that day, but I guess I'll try.
You can bring her.
Yeah, bring her.
Maybe pizza.
16th for you?
16th, okay, yeah.
Let's see if we can work it in on the 16th. And do we want to try to set a time at this point?
Yeah.
We can't make it earlier than 7:30? Can we make it like 7:00 or 6:30?
Sure, if you want to shoot for 6:30, let me shoot it by Jay.
6:30 work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
6:30.
Can you go with that?
Jim, does that work for you? You're a city employee, that works.
So, May 16th is 6:30.
And that's basically a roundtable discussion on training? And the Board of Appeals members could be invited also?
I can. I mean, if you all want to, sure.
I would think so. I think we're all in the same situation.
We're all getting trained on the same.
Yeah, so meanwhile, any pressing questions for Jay? Ask him, you know, it's a good time to do that. Yeah, because we got him for a block of time, so it won't be 15, you know, it won't be X amount of dollars per call.
Okay. And he'll be here in person, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the place is going to be here, somewhere within City Hall?
Yeah.
We got room for 12, 13 people?
Yes, so what day is the 16th?
Thursday.
Okay, there shouldn't be any going here.
Let's, let's see how many Board of Appeals members decide to participate. We might want to move down to the police station conference room so we can be more, in a more casual setting than this room.
Sure.
You know, since it's not a formal meeting.
Right.
So, if need be, we could use the, probably sign up for the Police Department conference room. That's bigger than our conference room.
Yeah.
Okay, you can send us all an email.
Okay.
All right. Did you have anything else, Darryl?
No, certainly not.
All right, I got a couple of questions. 20 supply, we got comments back from the county.
Yes.
Oh, wait till I find them. 20 supply, yeah. How come the county is so far ahead on reviewing this before we've, before gone through us? All we did on, on the 20 supply was concept plan.
Yeah.
So, we haven't heard any preliminary plans. We don't know what the building looks like, how the yard's going to be laid out.
Okay, so I'll, I can get the prints out whenever. They're in my office. I, you know, it's like, it's like their kid's got a dollar in his pocket. You know, as soon as they get the new plans out, they want, they want the world to see them. That's, they've not approached me about going forward. Not that they're, I know that the world's going forward around that, but we can, I can get the prints out.
And on the 25 questions or whatever they sent back, there wasn't anything mentioned about Harmon Drive? Or is that not on the drawing? Is that what's called Harmon Drive?
Hartman.
Hartman.
Are you talking about the one that connected?
Yeah, connected. Clearview, whatever it is, clear, no.
No.
No, it's a grand.
Grant Drive and.
Carnival.
Carnival Drive and Anthony Bullard.
Okay.
Yeah, there wasn't anything mentioned. So, is it going to show up on the drawing? Or I know there were some questions or comments made by City Council.
Yeah, so we're, at this point, we're asking for an easement to connect that road at some time maybe. So, I don't know that, how deep into the weeds the counties can get on that. It will be part of the process, but for us to guarantee our easement in the event that we want to do that.
Is that the recommendation of this commission here that we wanted the easement, not the street?
You're asking if something happened a few weeks ago. So, I have to look a little bit at it, Jim. It's been a while, I think that we had, we wanted to.
My, my recollection was that the commission was agreeable to getting a right-of-way for that future connection, but not to require the developer to install the full connection.
Okay.
He wouldn't be responsible for that section.
Right. They needed to, they needed to design that would facilitate that connection in the future, but I believe the commission's consensus was not to require him to build it as part of the hardware store development.
First time around, when we looked at it, it was part of connecting the whole, whole thing. Then we, did we?
Actually, I thought it was, yeah.
Part of the discussion, didn't that also go to the mayor and city council about the?
Something I should look at.
I want to make sure it's on the drawings, even if it's marked for the future. But needs to make sure that it's on the drawing. So, that's why I asked if, how come we haven't had the drawings yet?
I think it was, and again, it's been several months since that project was before us, but I think the result was similar to what we see with, sometimes with sidewalk requirements where, where the commission allows something to go forward and we get an easement for installation of that in the future, you know, at a point. And I think FP Duffy, for example, you know, we didn't, we didn't require them to build a sidewalk along the road because there is a pinch point at the bridge where there's no room for a sidewalk.
Right.
And so, there was a question about, do we want to encourage pedestrians and then dump them out onto the shoulder? But we got, we made sure we had room for that sidewalk in the future. If that bridge ever gets widened, then we can get a sidewalk right there and so on. So, I guess with the hardware store, same thing, you know, if the city decides in the future that that connection is indeed important, we have the ability to do it.
But should that be in that note, on those notes there? It's not in there.
It's not. That's why.
And that's something that. That needs to be included in the preliminary plan. And ultimately, for that to be approved, there will be a, just like we get plaques that dedicate all the easements to the city at the end of the project, we'll also get a right-of-way dedication when, when the Mylar prints are done and everything is signed, once everything's approved. But we do need to make sure that that's on the preliminary and the final plan.
In fact, that just came up with VAPCO, third amended. Mr. Beakraff called me about the Mylar's and wanted to make, I wanted to make sure it was on there as a permanent recommendation.
That's the only two comments I had. Did you have anything from Jay that he wanted, other than the training?
Just our training, he wanted to know what type, how we're going to do it. And just correct me if I'm wrong, but just, just the training, we'll invite the BZA on the 16th down to the Police Department, perhaps.
Okay.
And Chairman Parker's going to buy the pizzas. That's really awesome, Jim, I appreciate that.
Not a problem. I'd rather for us to buy them or myself to buy them than for the attorney to buy them, then charge the city more for it.
Exactly. Oh, boy.
Jay, Jay's not on, so he didn't hear that. But I'm sure he will.
He'll be here by watching.
Somewhere. Okay. Old business, I don't think there's any. Everything I know on new business was the training, unless someone else has something under new business. I'm sorry, I skipped over to county.
Oh.
Can't do that.
Never.
Never.
We were just talking about us, too. Got it out of the way.
You guys forgot it, it was on your desks when you gave us.
Yes, yes, I haven't looked at it, but I guess it's there.
It's okay. It's short and sweet, but there is one thing I did add on here, and that was an approved moratorium that the Board of County Commissioners did on the 25th of April. And that is a moratorium for storage of food processing residuals and dissolved flotation residuals, known as DAF. Several farms use these as fertilizer, and they have been known to cause a lot of concern for the neighboring properties and homeowners because of smell, dust, and other things that are associated with it. So, just wanted you to be aware, because I know there were some people up in this area, in the Tawny Town area, that were, that had concerns over that. So, in case you got any questions about that. For water sewer, Tawny Town did not have any amendments for the spring amendment cycle, but just some information that. but just some information that it is going to the Board of County Commissioners for approval before being sent to MDE on May 16th. And then, for the housing study, did provide some graphics there for if you want to take the Housing Needs Assessment Survey, please do, and then some timeline information for how that's going to play out. The website is up, running, has timeline information, updates, you can sign up for updates as well, for email updates from the county in general, county planning in general, and that would, that would be part of it. For the annual report, Randolph says he will be getting a draft copy of the report to you guys within a couple weeks, and that's everything I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Like I said, our next meeting will be, other than the training, would be May the 20th because of Memorial Day. Everyone good with that? Jay, or, Daryl, you have anything?
I do, sir.
Okay, Jim? Anyone from the floor have any comments? None, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Bradley made a motion. Garner seconded. In favor, single five, saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, carry. Thank you. Very good discussion.